Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, May 20th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call the meeting into order. The first order of business this evening, as always, is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have Reverend John Ogden here from Grandy Assembly of God. Is in the audience? Maybe not.
I don't think he made it.
Okay. Paul, would you like to?
I would be happy to.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day. Lord, what a beautiful day to live in Currituck. Father, I ask that you would be with us this evening, Father, as we contemplate the issues before us. Father, give us wisdom as we listen to the words being spoken this evening. Help us to render opinions and granting permission where it needs to be granted, Father, and question where it needs to be. Lord, I thank you for each and every member of our citizenry that are here. Father, I thank you for their diligence to come to this meeting. Lord, I pray that you would protect them following this meeting on their way home and that each and every one of us would arrive safely, Lord. I lift up Currituck County. I lift up the state of North Carolina, Lord, and I lift up the United States of America, Father. In Jesus' name I ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. For those in the audience, I can usually project my voice pretty good. Our mics aren't working and projecting out to the audience, so just a reminder to the board and the audience, if you can't hear us, we'll do our best to speak up this evening, right? If you have, if you need hearing aids and you're in the back and you need to move up front. All right. Next up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder. Megan?
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the Board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Wardens, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
I do. The Ashbrook Estates, we did receive a letter. We own property within 500 feet of it. The swamp.
So, do you have a fixed opinion about the application that's not subject to change? Any outside knowledge? I mean, it's really up to the Board if you want to move for Commissioner Etheridge to be recused.
You're not going to receive any financial compensation from this? You don't have any business dealings with them? You just?
We own the swamp, the back.
You own a budding property, right? I don't, does anyone have a problem with that or see that rising?
She led the sheriff's office train, and I appreciate it, Ms. Kiddy.
Okay.
I don't see any reason then to.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Did you have anything?
I do, I brought it up, and I tried to look, that's one of the reasons why I was barely made it on time, but I did try to look in my QuickBooks, which I did like an update in 2020. 2018 or 2019, I did a job for Stuart or Stuart and/or Brian Ennis. But like I said, it was almost, it was, I know more than five and less than six, and Stuart gave me a Coke Zero at the elections. That was a $2 Coke when I was working the election polls. He had an extra one, so I figured I'd put that out there too, so, but that's it.
Okay. So you're not currently doing any work, and you don't have any expectation of any work?
Zero. Five years plus. Yeah, I think it's six, but I know it's five.
All right.
But I couldn't pull it up.
All right. I think you're safe as well. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is approval of the agenda, and we do need you to amend that agenda tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add discussion topic to closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled Currituck County versus Currituck Board of Adjustment and Edward Delaney and Tara Murphy.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kitty. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next up is our public comment. This evening, I have Mr. James Memm signed up. It's been a while. Welcome back, Mr. Memm.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. James Memm's 105 Chestnut Drive. So this is pertaining to golf carts. I understand the urgency, thought, and reasoning behind putting a criminal penalty on underage golf cart operation. However, it deeply bothers me that, again, the state law is being used as a scapegoat to implement a criminal penalty. Do not make the very thing I grew up doing a criminal penalty. How has this worked in recent history? There are literally businesses in North Carolina that make their living by modifying golf carts to make them safely operational on public roadways. How are you going to tell me they're so unsafe? Kids used to bring their guns to school. Making it a crime to do so has done what? Has it stopped or even slowed mass shootings at schools? According to NHTSA, in 2022, 3,082 people were killed in car crashes involving a teen driver. Does that mean we will be making it a criminal offense to operate a vehicle as a teen? Let's be real, making it a criminal offense will do what at the expense of limiting the freedoms we have as children? You want to take a freedom away that will lower deaths? Ban social media for children under ages 16. Freedom comes at a cost. Parents are responsible for enforcing guiding and loving and creating memories with their children, not you, our local government. There are far bigger fish to fry than the 14-year-old riding a golf cart to his friend's houses six houses down. We all know this isn't a problem until Karen calls. I'm really going to be frustrated when Karen calls and complains because she doesn't like me standing up here, and then you guys are forced to act on me and my child because I was letting him drive me around my neighborhood, or when I feel safe and comfortable, I let him drive himself. Let parents be parents. This is literally a red flag golf cart law. My children have done absolutely nothing but try to live their lives like children once did in this community. For the loss of the children or child that led to this thought, I am sincerely sorry, and I wish to hell no one. But that's not to take away from the rights of the millions of children that not criminally charged for safely engaging in the very same lifestyle for decades has been going on in this community. This is not a crime. This shall never be a crime and shall remain in conversation with parents, education of youth, and continuation of the very freedoms we have in this country. You want a solution? Spend our tax money on things that bring our families together, puts our families on the golf cart together, puts fathers back in the homes, and continue to enforce the drug laws in our schools, as I continue to hear very frequently that they are a serious problem. It's far too frequent that I open social media and see the loss of a child due to poor parenting, depression, drugs, and suicide. Those are real problems we face today, not my children on a golf cart. Please, Board, do not add a criminal penalty to this. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Kim Twine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Before you get started, we need your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Kimberly Twine, 132 South Street in Moayaw.
Thank you.
Yes. It's a privilege to come before the Board this evening. I've not had an opportunity to do so since becoming Director at the Currituck County Board of Elections. And my reason for doing so, I want to let you all know of a program, it's a community outreach program that we hope to implement soon, and it's called the I Voted sticker art contest. It's an effort to reach our youth here in Currituck County through the schools and the local libraries, and I hope you're all familiar with the I Voted stickers, all of you too. And what this, what this contest is all about is asking the students, they're given guidance and do's and don'ts and what they can and can't do's, but ultimately, what we want them to do is to design our sticker for the upcoming November election. We think it's a great opportunity, as I said, to get the kids involved, to get them interested. Some of them might not even know what is going on in November, but we would like to reach out to them, and I think this is a really great program, a great way to do it. The winning design will be printed on approximately 25,000 I Voted stickers. We have currently 24,234 registered voters in Currituck County. And again, that'll be distributed to everyone that votes during the general election, both early voting period and on Election Day. And so I'm here, the reason for my bringing this to you all this evening, what other counties are doing, the contest winner is recognized both by their Board of Elections and also their county commissioners. So whoever the winner would be, I would ask this Board's permission that we could maybe set aside a night during one of your meetings that the Board of Elections could also be present. We could bring the student and their family in and recognize them as the winner.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. And lastly, I have Mr. Steve Hedrick. Good evening again. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail. During, when Connie and I were at the Citizens Academy, learned quite a bit about how things operate. By and large, we have a great, fantastic group of people. What really impressed me the most was our 911 center. Those folks down there do a fantastic job 24/7. When one of them looked at me and said, "If you're in Currituck County, I will find you," made me feel really good about being a citizen of Currituck County, which brings me to my topic for this evening. On Thursday, 9 March of '23, the North Carolina General Assembly, statements, which I have two of them in this packet here, recognizes our 911 telecommunicators as first responders. These folks who answer the phones are your first responders. They are the calm in the storm. They are the ones who have to remain the calm in the storm to direct help to those who need it. I'm not going to read this entire statement from NC Dit, which is Department of Information Technology. Let's see if I've covered that part. It says, "However, it all is a government, our telecommunicators have historically not been recognized as part of the public safety network to be treated as serving administrative or call center roles, in part because they perform administrative tasks while not actively answering 911 calls. However, they hear cries of devastation, but like I said, act as a voice of calm, guiding both the callers and first responders in the field to often traumatic situations, and they should be recognized appropriately for their role." I would imagine when these folks go home at night, they have to play those scenarios over and over in their head of what they did or did not do, how did it turn out? Because I don't know if they find out how things turn out, but they still have to live with what they, how they help people, you know, how things turn out. As the first first responders, these individuals deserve a recognition for their difficult role. In this state, North Carolina, of 3,000 citizens, they answer 7 million calls a year. 7 million. The 9/11 telecommunications, obviously, are local government employees. In addition, the Board encourages, this is the 9/11 Board for the state, and encourages employing local governments that recognize telecommunications for their difficult job and consider these individuals as part of their public safety network when setting their compensation. Also, I'm running out of time. I also have two statements here from, that were read, one on the, one from the House, one from the Senate, all right, requesting to recognize our folks as such. I have also got, took me a while to find this, 28 counties, North Carolina, recognize our 911 operators as first responders. 28. I mean, I wish there was 100 counties, but 28. I would like for this Board to consider recognizing our 911 telecommunications operators that calm in the storm as part of our first responders, so that they can have the same access as that every other first responder gets. I've got everywhere from Caswell, Perquimmons is in here, who is this one? Mitchell County, the list goes on, and this last one I got in my hand is, I can't, I stapled, went through it. Anyway, I would like for you guys and girl, ladies, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, to take this, read through it, and hopefully, since our budget is coming up, we can do something to help these fine folks that serve our county so well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. They do an excellent job.
All right. That was the last person I had signed up this evening. Is there anyone that came in that would like to speak that did not sign up for public comment? All right. Seeing no one, I will close public comment at this time and move on to Commissioner Report. Since we haven't heard from her in a while, how about you, Ms. Kitty, to start us off this evening?
Well, thank you.
You've been absent for a while. Tell us all about your.
I won't tell you about what you're up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dedication committed to a task or purpose bound by a pledge or duty, an obligation. Yes, Currituck County, we are blessed by people who are truly dedicated individuals. These individuals who employ, employees of the county, these are individuals who serve on the many committees in the county, and these are individuals who helped to make our county the great county it is. These are the individuals who do not take their commitment or duty lightly. If they have made a commitment, you can depend on them. One of these individuals I would like to recognize is Gary Owens of Harbinger. On Tuesday, May the 14th, he worked the election polls for the Powell's Point precinct during a very difficult time for him and his family. My condolences to Gary and his family on the passing of his mother, Ms. Janet Owens, who passed away on that Monday, May the 13th. During her 84 years, she wore many hats, but always had time for her church, Powell's Point Christian Church, where she served as an organist for 50 years. Yes, it was a life well-served, and I'd like to thank Gary for his dedication. God bless his family during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Payman?
Nothing this evening.
All right. How about you, Mr.?
Well, I had the opportunity to take part in the COA graduation down in Dare County. That same evening, they held graduation ceremonies in Elizabeth City, and 255 graduates walked across the two stages combined for a total of 266 degrees or diplomas. It was a beautiful ceremony. The speakers that day were high school dual-enrolled speakers who will also graduate with their high school diploma in the next week or so, and I'm so proud to be part of this organization that really transforms lives and gives our students and our children the options on many, many different career paths, many of which will allow them to stay here and thrive in this county. I also want to thank the staff for all the work and the time and the energy that you've put in for the budget. I know it's been a very tumultuous year. I know that it hasn't been easy, but I just want to thank you for the time that you've spent and appreciate your diligence. And finally, I would also like to thank the members of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We met for the last time last Monday for the school year, and I am so proud of the work that is being done. It is part of the agenda packet tonight. This council really is made up of individuals who care about saving the at-risk youth of our community. They provide numerous opportunities to help them right the wrongs that they may have committed and really become responsible, productive adults. So thank you for the work that you put in this year to all the members of JCPC. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to, I'll follow up on that and say thank you to Rebecca and the rest of the staff, and Ix, moving off to greener pastures and the legal decisions that have come down over the past several weeks or months, it has been a very tumultuous, I believe you use that word, time, and thank you, Rebecca. I know you, we threw a lot on your plate, so thank you for all that you've done. And happier news, for those that are in Corolla, the new ABC store is moving along. It is taking literally truckloads of alcohol to fill that store up. I went in there the other day and was blown away at how big the store is compared to the old store. So they are planning on having that open hopefully the first week of June, if not by mid-June at the latest. We are short-staffed at the ABC Board as far as employees go to work, so if there's anyone in Corolla looking for some seasonal work, or I believe we have a full-time job there as well, we are hiring at, for the Corolla ABC store. Because, oh, we have a blood drive going on this week at the Currituck County Government Complex in Courtroom C, and that'll be Thursday, the 23rd, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Please come on by. They need all the help they can get over there. With that, I'll hand it over. Mr. Beaumont?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. So in keeping with Mr. Hendrick's word earlier tonight, this ironically is EMS week in the state, nationally. Yep. So with that said, in celebrating EMS week, I wanted to read something. Ladies and gentlemen, as we gather here today during EMS week, I want to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the remarkable team at the Currituck County Department of Fire EMS. To all our EMS personnel, your dedication, skill, and compassion in providing critical emergency medical services to our community are truly commendable. Day in and day out, you were there for our community in their moments of greatest need, often under challenging and demanding circumstances. Your unwavering commitment to saving lives and ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents and visitors does not go unnoticed. We recognize that providing emergency services in Currituck presents unique challenges. Our diverse geography, ranging from rural areas to coastal regions, requires you to be adaptable and resourceful in responding to emergencies. Additionally, serving our resort area on the Outer Banks, especially with the large influx of tourists during the summer, demands an even higher level of readiness and efficiency. Compounding these challenges is the fact that we do not have a hospital in the county, making your role even more critical. Despite these obstacles, you consistently deliver high-quality care and protection, showcasing your exceptional abilities and resilience. In addition to your exceptional EMS work, we also recognize and deeply appreciate your dual role responsibilities in providing fire suppression response. This dual role capability is singularly unique in this region of North Carolina, and it highlights the immense versatility, bravery, and dedication required. Whether you're responding to a medical emergency or fighting fires, your ability to switch roles seamlessly and perform with excellence is nothing short of extraordinary. We also acknowledge the long hours and extra shifts many of you worked to ensure the schedule is covered. Your willingness to serve at all hours, even in the middle of the night when most are sleeping comfortably in their beds, demonstrates your remarkable commitment and sacrifice. Being apart from your families, missing holidays, with loved ones, birthday celebrations, and other special moments, are sacrifices you make to ensure our community's safety and well-being. Your dedication ensures that our community is protected and cared for around the clock. It is said that here is the ordinary people who make themselves extraordinary. Each of you embodies the spirit through your selfless service and professionalism. Whether responding to emergencies, providing medical care, offering comfort and reassurance in times of distress, or tackling fire-related incidents, you are making a profound difference in the lives of those you serve. During this EMS week, we celebrate not just your expertise and hard work, but also the compassion and empathy that define your approach to emergency medical services and fire suppression. Your efforts are integral to the health and safety of our community, and we are incredibly fortunate to have such dedicated team here in Currituck. We can have the best equipment money can buy, but without you, it is useless. Your knowledge, expertise, and dedication are what truly make the difference in every emergency response. Thank you for all you do. Your contributions are invaluable, and we are deeply grateful for your service. With sincere appreciation, we honor you this day and this week.
That's all I have this trip. Thank you. Kevin?
To piggyback on Steve's comments, as well as Commissioner Beaumont's, our dispatchers are 911, when they call, I mean, we've had successes where they've delivered babies over the phone. We've had successes where they've assisted with talking somebody down from, from hurting himself, possibly committing suicide, from situations where, one word I want to say, very abusive domestic situations where they talk somebody out of, you know, going for, you know, to get to a safe place and all that kind of stuff. And probably about four years ago, we had in our in-service training every year we do for the sheriff's office, there was a, it was, it was something with domestic violence, but the call, like, you know, it varies, like, it's online, so like, you sit there and you can listen to it, and you hit the button, click to the next page, but was like a five- or six-year-old child calling in as a domestic, as dad, or beaten mom, or boyfriend with beaten girlfriend, whatever. I mean, like I said, they, our people are just, I'll put them up against anybody, they're top-notch. And the stuff that they hear and they see, like, and Owen can relate, and I know I've worked with Renee, his wife, you know, it's, our people are good, and, all right, to piggyback from that, but Steve, thank you for that. The EMS week, I'll go again, I'll put our people, Melton and Richard Lane, if I call them and ask them for something, or help, or whatever, and vice versa. Our people are top-notch. I mean, I'll put them with anybody. We have qualified people. You dial 911, you've got somebody competent answering the phone. They're going to send an EMS staff to your house for a medical reason or whatever, you've got some of the best of the best coming to your house. You need law enforcement? Go again. Some of the best of the best coming to your house. Currituck sets the standards on stuff. And I joke about the word amenities, because somebody made a comment that McCord said Currituck has so many amenities in the county and might throw the word amenities out in meetings. We do have amenities, and we're thankful for not just the public safety, but the staff that the community has. Rebecca stepped up like a champ. I mean, you know, I mean, we gave her basically two jobs and said, "Here you go, do this." She's done an excellent and amazing job, so congrats to you as well. We got good people, and like you said, it's, it's amazing how it gets done every day. But like I said, Steve, thank you for bringing that up. Couple more things. Bob took my, my blood drive, I X'd it out, but that's all good. The, I want to congrats to Morris Farms. They ran a successful event with social media today. People just, they want to find the negative in everything. I mean, you know, move if you hate, hate it so bad here, but you know, but they, like the comments or whatever, but they ran a successful event, they had a security team, they had every dot you could put on a clipboard, check, check, successful event. Good job to them. And you know, people made comments of, "Oh, they got deputies out there answering calls." They're paying for that deputy to be out there. For all duty, they're paying a fee, and actually, the county probably makes a little bit of money off of that when they contract, because depending on the rate of the employee, same with EMS, depending on the rank of the person, like when Dennis Anderson pays in contracts, it's usually based on the hire, but if you have a couple newbies or a couple years, you know, you know, we actually, so like I said, that's, you know, for the comments on those. And just like I said, if you want to say something negative on social media, just go sit in your closet or something. You know, it'd be easier. But, but like I said, we live in a great place, and like I said, EMS week, kudos to you guys, we love you, even though we give each other a hard time. And last week was law enforcement week, so, and like I said, I'll stand up for any guy that we got at our agency. We have two new ones in the back, working their first meeting. It's a box you got to check, you have to attend a commissioners meeting, so welcome those two guys, Deputy Mann and Deputy Edwards, two solid guys. That's pretty much it, but like I said, we live in a great place and thankful for EMS dispatch, public safety, county staff, everybody, and, and also, as Ms. Kitty said, Gary Owens is top-notch, and his family, they're as good as they come, Dr. Owens, all of them, so I'm very sorry for the passing of their mother. That's it for me.
Thank you. Owen, what's on your mind this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first would like to thank Rebecca and the Finance Office staff. They've trudged through. staff. They've trudged through this budget, and we'll see the results of what they've been doing. House Bill 1044 is a bill to create a study commission on the tier system. And as of right now, there's 28 cosponsors, and our Representative Goodwin is not a cosponsor. And I think this board should send him a letter asking him to please tag on to that bill. It's gaining traction the way it looks, so that's very important to us. I attended the grand opening of the Palmer into State last week. They've done a magnificent job in getting that in back up to speed, and they've got some long-range plans that should be very beneficial for this part of the county. And lastly, Steve Hendrick's words hit kind of close to home, since I sleep with the dispatcher. But I can tell when she's had a bad call on her shift, because it's just her demeanor at times. But she won't say anything. And I always say that the dispatchers have to be a psychologist first, because the situations that Kevin described and Paul described, they have to get that person calmed down to get the information they need to get the proper service delivered to them. But Steve, I certainly appreciate you bringing that up. And I know those girls and the guys work very hard at communications, and I know that firsthand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we move on to the manager's comment, I'm gonna keep keeping on the whole law enforcement, first responder thing. Jeff Walker, our Deputy Sheriff, sent over last week to the Board of Commissioners, the quarterly stats. From January 1 to May 1, 22,820 calls came through. There were over 3,000 citations and ordinance violations. 159 warrants were issued. I think Kevin did all of those.
Maybe three.
Service-issued paperwork, 910. Fraud and larcenies, 184. DUIs, 32. They responded to 193 recs. 176 domestic calls. Careless and reckless driving, 254 citations were issued. And the list goes on and on. It sounds bad, but like Kevin says, this is a great place to live, and these are the outliers. But it just goes to highlight what the 911 center call, center goes through, and how hard the deputies work, and our EMS and fire folks as well. So, kudos to all of you. And with that, I will jump over to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have a report.
Okay, thank you. Wait you while a little while.
I don't have a very long one.
Right. Anything from you this evening, Megan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We closed on the Maple Road property last week, the 16 acres that connects to our airport. The hope is to maybe put some hangers on there one day. So, the county officially owns that now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Following on what Owen said, is the board okay? Was sending Representative Goodwin a letter, asking him to support the?
The tier system for the counties, yes.
All right, so, get that draft in.
Should have a question. Why isn't he?
Right.
It was just introduced May the 2nd.
Right.
Okay.
Probably waiting here for a while.
And also, our lobbying firm, we need to fight them.
Yeah, engage them a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, next up, administrative reports. One item on that this evening, fire and EMS life-saving award presentation honoring firefighter and EMT Matt Greshack. All right, got it right. And Chief Melton?
Come on up, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a resolution from this board. I'll go ahead and read. County of Currituck, a resolution to recognize and commend firefighter EMT Matt Greshack for his exceptional bravery and life-saving actions. Whereas firefighter EMT Matt Greshack, a dedicated member of the Currituck County Fire EMS, demonstrated extraordinary bravery and professionalism in responding to an emergency situation involving a swimmer in distress near Milepost 7 on April 20th, 2024. And whereas, on the afternoon of April 20th, 2024, firefighter EMT Greshack, as part of the, excuse me, as part of the crew on Engine 6 arrived first on the scene, excuse me, established command and identified an immediate life safety threat. And whereas, without hesitation, firefighter EMT Greshack entered the cold, 55-degree water with a rescue buoy and personal fins, navigating through four-foot surf to reach the distressed and exhausted swimmer. And whereas firefighter EMT Greshack provided flotation and comforting reassurance to the victim, whose struggle in the surf had lasted nearly 40 minutes, demonstrating exceptional composure and skill under pressure. And whereas firefighter EMT Greshack's strong swimming abilities and outstanding physical fitness enabled him to safely tow the swimmer to shore, where the victim received necessary medical evaluation and care. And whereas, the victim and witnesses confirmed that firefighter EMT Greshack's actions were instrumental in saving the swimmer's life, showcasing the critical role and invaluable service provided by Currituck County Fire EMS personnel. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, that firefighter EMT Matt Greshack is hereby recognized and commended for his exceptional bravery, skill, and professionalism in performing a life-saving rescue on April 20th, 2024. The Board of Commissioners extends its deepest appreciation and gratitude to firefighter EMT Greshack for his heroic actions, which reflect great credit upon himself, the Currituck County Fire EMS, and the community he serves. Firefighter EMT Matt Greshack is awarded the Currituck County Life-Saving Award as a testament to his dedication and selfless service in ensuring the safety and well-being of others. A copy of this resolution should be presented to firefighter EMT Matt Greshack and recorded in the official minutes of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, adopted this 20th day of May, 2024.
Thank you for doing that. Zen?
Ben, tell me.
Yeah.
Come on out.
Come on up to the front, sir.
I think I said it last meeting, this is his second life-saving.
Carrera. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One second. Cat, will you come around? Mr. Chairman, would you like to come down?
Yes.
We'll take a break.
It's not that bad, Paul.
Oh, I forgot. Apologize.
Richard said he was doing it on purpose.
Congratulations.
All right, next up, we have a public hearing. Item 1, PB 23-14, Ashbrook Estates. Ashbrook Estates LLC is requesting a preliminary plat special use permit for 52-lot conservation subdivision located on the west side of Maple Road, tax map 52, parcel 12, in the Crawford Township. Good evening. Jenny, how are you today?
Good, how are you? Should we get everyone's?
Yep. Need to get everybody that's gonna testify to come up and swear in. All right, if you all would place your left hand and raise your right, please. You all solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got. Thank you. What's an attorney? Should they not have an attorney present to qualify any experts?
So, they're not required to have an attorney, but they have to be careful about practicing law without a license. So, which means that they can't, like, advocate on someone's behalf, acting out as an attorney. There's a rule that I can read off, but that's, they don't have to have an attorney, but it's strongly encouraged.
Okay. All right. Jenny, please proceed.
Thank you. So, this is a request for a 52-lot conservation subdivision on property located in Maple. The property is owned by Ashbrook Estates LLC, and the request is for a preliminary plat special use permit for this 52-lot conservation subdivision. They are proposing 60% open space, a little bit more than that actually, and the density is .4 dwelling units per acre. And you can see here on this vicinity map, the property there in the middle, it's surrounded by, to the north, the, I believe it's the Maplewood subdivision. To the east is the Brady Landing Air Park, as well as Maple Highlands, I believe. And then to the south is the Maple Water Treatment Plant, and then to the west is the swamp. This is just a little bit more zoomed-in version, and you can also see the DOT yard is there across the Maple Road as well. The property is zone agriculture. As you can see, so is the surrounding property. The property, the board may recall seeing this particular property at the April 1st meeting, where the applicant was requesting an amendment to the land use plan from O2 preserved lands to the G1 low-density growth. And that was approved by the board, so the entire tract is now G1 transect, which is that low-density growth transect. The property's also within the Maple Barco Small Area Plan area, which classifies it as, there's a portion of transitional, a little bit of rural, as well as conservation. The plan says that the transitional designation is appropriate for areas between land use classifications that may contain non-compatible uses, and that greater flexibility is allowed in transitional areas. The rural designation provides for low-density scattered residential, and the conservation offers protection to those environmentally sensitive areas. I also wanted to note that the property is within the Airport Overlay District. I don't have a map for you, but it's in that compatible use zone 3, which doesn't have any particular specific provisions for development, but does say that the maximum density would be what's allowed in the base zoning district. So, that's what the applicant's requesting with this proposal. It's not within the height district overlay. Here's an overview of the entire property. You can see the wetlands in the rear. There's approximately 22.79 acres of Army Corps designated wetlands. You can see some lateral ditches running east to west across the property. Actually, I think they run west to east. There's an outlet ditch here at the Maple Road that is proposed to remain and to be cleared out for positive drainage. The ditches in the rear here are to remain as well.
Mr. Chairman, are those, like, some of the farmer ditches that are already there, correct?
Correct. That's what those are. Here's an overview of the proposed site layout, lot layout of the property. As I mentioned previously, they are required to provide 60% open space, and they're providing 79.4 acres of open space, which is 60.8% open space. Again, .4 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with agricultural zoning district and the G1 transect, which results in a maximum of 52 lots. The applicant is proposing a 30,000-square-foot minimum lot, actually, the ordinance requires 30,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The smallest lots shown here are 35,000 square feet. The average lot size is 38,936 square feet, and the largest lot is a little bit larger than 50,000 square feet. The applicant's proposing a 30-foot front setback requirement, 10 feet on the sides, 15 on the corner side, and 25 on the rear, and a minimum lot width at the setback is 85 feet. Additionally, there'll be some, there'll be 50-foot right-ofways with streets and sidewalks in the right-ofway. They're not proposing any lighting. They are proposing the streetscape landscaping that's required along the new street, and they are buffering along Maple Road, a 25-foot buffer along Maple Road. They're also providing a 50-foot riparian buffer here adjacent to the wetland areas. And according to the applicant, there's no lighting, no street lighting proposed for this subdivision. They will provide a fee in lieu, if the preliminary plat's approved, that will be paid at final plat. This shows a little bit better, or shows the road, as well as some of the stormwater features that are proposed. Basically, the stormwater will be directed to, directed into road ditches, roadside swales, that will then convey into this BMP that is proposed to wrap around the lots here. Sorry, my mouse is not working. And then, there's an outfall here to discharge into the wetlands. So, and you can see some of the flow areas. I know it's kind of small, but there's flow areas where there'll be property line swales for each property. This project will be on county water, and they will, they will use onsite septic. I did provide the site evaluations in your agenda packet that show that the majority of the lots are provisionally suitable, or provisionally suitable with shallow placement. There is a cluster mailbox proposed here at the entrance for the postal service. They did have a community meeting. There was only one attendee there, and I think their questions were related to the type of pedestrian access that would be proposed. I do want to point your attention to the adequate public facilities, which is one of the findings that the applicant will have to show this evening in your agenda packet. The second, I believe it's the second page of the staff report, there's the chart that you're used to seeing with those adequate school, the adequate public facilities numbers. This particular project is in the Central Elementary School District, which is currently at 97% capacity, does not have capacity at this time to serve the additional 13 units generated by this development. It does appear that the middle school, Currituck Middle School, as well as the high schools, do have capacity to serve. As you'll notice in your staff report, the ordinance requires that school capacity be in place at the time of approval or within two years after the initial approval of the special use permit. And the board may place limitations on the timing and extent of new development in accordance with the ordinance, and a phasing plan may be provided and approved by the board. Since this is an evidentiary hearing, staff does not provide recommendation, but did provide multiple policies of the Maple Barco Plan, as well as the land use plan in the staff report for the board's review. Here are some policies here from the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. A land use policy, land use policy 1, provide for very low-density development. And two environmental policies, or three environmental policies, 1, 2, and 4, to encourage development that preserves natural features, and that stormwater shall be treated prior to entering environmentally sensitive areas, and to encourage appropriate development on poorly drained soils. And then there's the Community Heritage Policy, Community Heritage Policy CH1, preserve open space, ag lands, and water front-view sheds within the study area. The Imagine Currituck Plan also has policies that may apply here, which is using the future land use map as a guide for decision-making, considering small area plans, community character, and protecting the uniqueness of the county through preservation of farmland and other open areas and public spaces. Infrastructure and county services, goals, and policies here regarding providing adequate facilities, transportation- Transportation policy, constructing pedestrian walkways, some more environmental policies related to preserving sensitive lands and coastal wetlands and non-coastal wetlands. Some parks and recreation policies related to providing public access and requiring, continuing to require fee in lieu. And then some policies related to the northern mainland, land use policies regarding fostering growth and development while maintaining the distinct natural environment and rural character, and encourage attractive, vibrant, walkable communities that support a variety of businesses and recreational activities. All right, that's a lot of land use plan policies that you may want to consider. And as you're, I'm sure already familiar with, these are the review standards that the applicant will need to show that the application is in compliance with these standards for the board to issue the permit. I do want to make, I forgot to mention one thing that I do want to just bring up, because I didn't see this in the agenda packet, in the submittals from the applicant. The applicant may be able to speak to this. The lot coverage was not provided, so I'm not sure what the proposed lot coverage would be, or what they're planning to design to, but that might be something that the applicant can speak to this evening as to whether that would be like 24% or something more. Okay. And at this time, I don't have anything else prepared, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What type of buffer? You said there was a 25-foot buffer for Maple Road?
Let me go back to that plan sheet and zoom in. Which, it's in the agenda packet. I'll need to read it from the packet. It's on, it's on the, it's on the very last page of your preliminary plat in your agenda packet. It has the details of what's required to be planted within that buffer.
So Jenny, if I'm looking at this, I'm trying to put my head around the, the map that you have up there, the gray around the subdivision, that's their stormwater ponds and outflow areas?
That's, the gray here is open space. I'll go to the next one. This, this was their proposed BMP.
Okay.
Here around the lots.
All right.
So the gray is open space, and there's secondary conservation area, as well as that primary conservation area, which is your wetland area.
So inside that kind of dashed line with the arrows?
Here.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that one to the far right, too? Is that, that's, that's just open space, correct?
Yes.
Not a pond.
Are you talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this appears to just be open space in that existing ditch here.
Because there's a lot of ditches.
In your presentation, you talked about stormwater needed to be treated before it went into sensitive areas, like, which is on page seven, wetlands, canals, creeks, swamps, and Currituck Sound. With this plan, is there any way that the stormwater could seep into some of these areas, or?
My understanding is the way that it's designed, that the water will go to that BMP before it, before it goes into the wetland area. Is that correct, Jay?
Yeah, I'll give you a little more detail on that.
Okay.
Okay, anything further from Ms. Turner? All right, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, give a more detailed response to your question earlier about having a lawyer and unauthorized practice of law. I'd like to read off the comment from the ethical rule, just to give a little bit more of a detailed response. So the individuals here tonight for the applicant who were sworn in, they may appear and testify as to factual matters that they have personal knowledge of, as well as any expert opinions that they are qualified to present. But the presentation of other evidence, including examination and cross-examination of witnesses, making legal arguments, and advocacy for results on behalf of others, is the practice of law and may only be performed by a licensed attorney.
Okay.
So basically, factual matters that they have personal knowledge of and expert opinions, but they have to show that they're qualified to make those opinions.
Okay. Thank you. All right, who's up first? If you wouldn't introduce yourself, right?
Jason Mazel with the Timmins Group, engineering and surveying. I'll kind of go through a few of the minor details in regards to the technical plan.
Jason, before you get into it, give us a little bit of your history, background, what you do, so you can establish yourself and your bona fides.
Absolutely. I'm a licensed land surveyor, been licensed since 2010. I have been doing civil and surveying land project management since about 2000. We've done several subdivisions in Currituck County and neighboring counties as well, similarly with zoning and stormwater requirements. Our firm is a 16-office firm throughout the mid-Atlantic with over 1,000 employees between those offices. Our local office is consistent of experts that have been in this area, working in this area for 20-plus years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Please continue.
To answer the question of stormwater, the BMP, we'll have to treat the design storm and maintain that volume in the design storm prior to it being released to the natural outfalls. So the BMP is sized to accommodate that. We will have infiltration testing and things of that nature done inside of the design plans and permits to quantify whether that'll be a wet pond or infiltration basin. Our hope is that will be a infiltration basin that'll be easier to maintain for the HOA. We know that maintenance is a, is a real problem with most of these subdivisions in our, in our community. I want to speak a little bit to the open space, that anything that is not going to be primary conservation, like wetlands, or a stormwater BMP, we are going to leave as active agriculture. And that's in our conservation development plan that was submitted prior to this preliminary plat coming before the, before staff. One of the tick marks on the requirements is to try to preserve that, that historical or cultural heritage. Well, that's one of the elements we looked at as a qualifier for that open space. So we want the farmer to continue farming whatever is left over that he can, that he can farm. That's why a lot of those ditches are staying in place that are outside of that development area to continue to promote his, his or her needs in forming that off, that, that remaining land. As for the development itself, we meet or exceed the county's UDO requirements for lot size, lot width, all of the necessary items for infrastructure to support the development will, will be put in place, and will be designed in accordance with the plans of North Carolina and Currituck County. The only other item that is the school system, currently with Central being where it is, likely we would need to do a phased development here. We'll certainly accommodate whatever the board's wishes and staff's wishes are on that. The Tolls Creek Elementary School that's currently under construction, hopefully by the time this subdivision comes online, that will hopefully relieve some of the stress and strain at Central. But if we get to that point and that's not ready for, for occupation, then we can certainly do a phased development.
When's your first expected date of CO?
Given the time it takes to get through the DEQ permitting and back through same county staff with construction plans, we're probably at least, you know, four or five months to get permits in hand, and you still have to build, build the infrastructure. So I would say we're probably looking at what, first of the year, maybe, in two years.
Two years out.
Okay, so that's '26?
Yeah. So we're right there, kind of at that border, I think what Tolls Creek is, is it 25, all 25?
Okay. So it should absolutely be nothing running by the time y'all are.
Yes, sir.
Just an anecdotal question, I guess, since you said you're going to continue ag there, and it seems like this is maybe better for Jenny. Do we, don't we require ag buffers or something if you have ag next to a residence, or because this is whatever?
It's actually, it would be on an adjacent property. Like if there was agriculture taking place on an adjacent property, you would have to have the buffer.
Right. Okay. All right, yeah, all right, just remember hearing that at some point, so.
How many acres?
Want to ask a question?
How many acres ballpark do you, I mean, I know it was, I put 79 something.
Uh, let's see.
How many do you think will be still farmed? 50, 60? Ballpark, I mean, you don't.
Let me see what we had, so.
I think she said 79 something acres of.
Yeah, 79 total acres of open space.
So just ballpark.
That includes the wetlands. Probably 40.
40.
When that is rented, will that money go to the HOA in annual rent?
I'll let Mr. Ennis answer that question.
Or are they going to have the ownership of the open space?
Yes, sir, I think the intent is. Stuart, NS 113 Baxter Lane, thank you. The intent is to do whatever the UDO tells us to do, and whatever the code is, we're going to play by the rules, of course. But the intent would be that it is open space for the community, so it's to benefit the community. We want to keep it agricultural. We've got a local farmer in charge of it, who does a great job with it, and I think that'll be, keep the highest and best use of the open land, rather than just let it grow up and grow wild. This provides an income for the HOA, and it provides, it ensures clean ditches and proper water maintenance and everything like that. So I think that would be the best use of the property, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, Jason, can you address Ms. Turner's question about lot coverage?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I believe it's in the drainage narrative. We would be looking at this being a low-density development, so 24% total, total impervious covers throughout the development itself, so, you know, we would restrict, and honestly, 24% in a lot of cases is way more than what's really needed on these sites. Generally speaking, we try to look at what's, what's an appropriate amount of square footage per lot. For instance, on a half-acre lot, you may only need 5,000 square foot of impervious cover. So it may wind up being less than 24%, but it won't be any greater than 24%.
Any further questions? Anything further from you, sir?
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, did you have anything you wanted to add as a devolved proceeding?
Yes, sir, just wanted to put a face to the project. If there's any questions for me that I can answer, I'll be happy to. Otherwise, I'll defer to Jason.
Well, I think we need to keep you up here for a minute, since it's your project. Typically, we have a certified appraiser come in to meet the findings of fact that the usual item injured the adjoining value of the lands and be in harmony with the area in which it's located. Did you have anyone here that's professional to speak to that, to offer testimony?
No, sir, only because I was told there was not going to be anybody here to say that we would have a negative impact. So as a, I'm not a licensed expert, I'm not an attorney, but my experience and firsthand knowledge would very simply be, we're going to be adding value, and I don't believe there's anybody here to say that we're detracting value.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no traffic, there's been no traffic analysis, like the trips per day?
DOT was a part of TRC, and they had no requirements for any additional roadway improvements. And we'll still have to go through the Department of Transportation for driveway permit, encroachment agreement, so on and so forth.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I have Mr. Ennis signed up and Jason signed up. I'm guessing you guys have offered up what you had to say this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that would like to provide testimony this evening on this subject?
With standing or something?
Right, well, we're gonna. Good evening.
Connie Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail. I was not sworn in as a testimony.
Well, I guess maybe, maybe the county attorney.
She definitely needs to be sworn in if, if she's going to provide testimony, if it's based on your personal knowledge.
So what will you be, what are you speaking, what do you plan on speaking to, I guess, before we go down that road?
Public comment.
Well, you have to have standing. This isn't public comment, per se. You have to have standing to provide evidence one way or the other for or against, or maybe if you know something personally about the property that you could present as evidence and direct testimony. Is that, did I say that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. So a quasi-judicial hearing, which that's what this is, material, competent, substantial evidence has to be presented to the board, which would include, if you have personal knowledge of something, that would include facts, or if you were able to qualify yourself as an expert witness and render an expert opinion. Otherwise, the board cannot hear.
I'm Connie Hedrick. I'm a licensed Realtor, Currituck County in Virginia, and North Carolina in Virginia. Been licensed since 2016.
And if you, I hate to cut you off, but you will need to swear in if you do believe that you have that testimony to offer.
All right, so, if you wouldn't, you grab a wobble there?
I do.
All right, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
Thank you. All right, please continue.
The reason I believe that, I believe that we should bring it as a point of reference. In the diagnose, the overlay, we did the airport overlay, and we just voted on procuring or stop. We just said that we procured the 16 acres to enlarge the hangars there. So as a Realtor, we have to disclose any environmental factors that go with homes as we're disclosing them. So what I would ask is, I believe that the applicant has given all the checkbox to keep the designations rule and all that, but what about the noise pollution? We've already had a complaint in a previous session from neighbors for light.
That's hearsay, which cannot be present.
I was present at.
That's not a mess.
Okay, still hearsay.
So my question is, based on the overlay map, with me attending the Citizens Academy and receiving the information on the expansion of the airport, is there, are in, is there any data presented on the noise pollution, light pollution, and expansion of not only the hangars, but an additional runway? Because it's supposed to be low-density, and they kept it that way. So that would be my concern as a test, as the board, to ask for qualifiers on the expansion of the airport, the runway, the hangars, and how they would impact the citizens that would purchase these homes, and how it would impact the value of the surrounding neighborhoods.
So as a Realtor, if you were going to sell a lot in this neighborhood?
Yes.
Would you let the person know that they're going to be buying next to an airport? Or would it be coming up on them to know?
Actually, not only would I disclose that they're going to be buying next to an airport, I would ask for a noise pollution study, how many decibels. One of the things I did learn firsthand at the Citizens Academy was that we're getting larger jets, we're just not getting the props that are coming in here. We're getting them all times and nights, and that's probably, they talked about the gas fuel, the increase in the sales on the gas fuel, why we needed the hangars, and the potential for the expansion of the runway. And that they had requested that they would do the hangars first versus the new runway. So it's coming. So it will, as a Realtor, I would say, not only what is our flight pattern, how does it impact for noise, but what is the plan on how much noise, if you're sitting in the backyard, if you're doing that. We have to do an air military station in Virginia, we have to disclose that all the time. So as a Realtor, yes, I would do that.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's an important factor of this particular expansion of these neighborhoods. I'm not against the neighborhood, but I think it's something for consideration.
Okay, so just a couple of things in clarification. The hangars, as far as, you know, light pollution, the hangars are designed so that they are not light pollution. I mean, you could say they will be lit, and at nighttime, what used to be pitch black now has a light out there. That is not, technically, I guess that is light pollution, but that doesn't rise to the level of being a nuisance. So that's number one. Number two, we're not building a new runway, we're just strengthening the one that's there, and there might be a little bit of a, I think we can, we can lengthen it by 500 feet, but that's not. I think we can, we can lengthen it by five hundred feet, but that's not a second runway. Believe it or not, the jets today are a lot quieter than they used to be. That's just by, by design, they're not, and they're definitely not military jets coming into Currituck. Now, um, the helicopters, there are completely legal to come in and do their operations, there's nothing we can do to stop that.
Exactly.
It's a public airfield and they are far louder for far longer than any other aircraft coming in and out of the air. But the, but the reason we're here tonight is the neighborhood, not necessarily the, the airport and the runway. And, you know, you know, as a real estate agent, first of all, you got to drive past the airport to get to the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Anyone that claims they didn't know it was there should move to Oceana.
I just felt that, I, I get that, I, and I understand the parameters, but we are growing. It's made evident we're growing.
Yep.
And that it's not necessarily testimony in opposition of the subdivision. But is that data that we should have to have in place to make sure that it's covered when our consumers go to buy that, purchase that house? You know, so I just thought that would be something that would be strategic for you guys to have in your packet.
Okay.
The, um, this might be for the county attorney or the county manager. The proposed hangar site from where Maple Road is probably about a mile and a half, I would say at least.
But it is along near a road, we haven't done the DOT studies and we haven't done the driveway studies yet. So we don't know what the traffic, fifty-two families, two cars, maybe three. Most of them might be pickup trucks, let's just call it for what it is. So I'm just saying, just do the daily math between you get out there and it's obvious you can only go in and you can only go out. So, um, I'm, I'm just saying is, the consideration of the expansion of the airport should be something to take in consideration on how you're going to develop that data and pass it on to the consumer.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else in the audience? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. The public hearing is still open, um. I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say, um, Mr. Ennis, that I would recommend that we hold off and that you bring in someone to meet, uh, some of these findings of fact, especially the value of adjoining or budding lands. That, that has to be proven through testimony. And we generally have someone for SGP for subdivision to come in and say that the homes that you're going to build are not going to affect the value of the adjoining properties.
Yes, sir.
Um, if you're, if you're okay with that, then I would suggest a delay.
I'll take good advice when it's offered and I'm more than happy to do that and make a, a better presentation.
Okay.
And I'm not an attorney, this is not that, but I'd like to strike the comment about mostly pickup trucks and that's just nonsense, we don't know. So I don't want that under consideration.
I think the, I think the board knows that we're not going to consider that, but.
Yes, more than happy to take it, sir.
Okay, so the question to you is, while you're still up here, uh, how long do you, do you think you would need? Do you want to try for the next meeting when we come back in two, two weeks or?
No, sir.
Go a little bit longer than that?
No, it'll take a little while longer, because there'll have to be a study done, a proper study, proper analysis, so it's going to take longer than two weeks.
Okay.
Several months, maybe, few months.
You think that'll take that long?
How about the second meeting in July, second meeting in July?
We can shoot for that, yes, ma'am, and I can let.
If you run into a problem, we can adjust, how's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
If, yeah, if a date is set right now, we won't have to re-advertise, um, so, but if you're not sure, then there will have to be a re-advertising since it's a public.
Well, we're going to set it for that second meeting in, in June, which is the tenth, you said, July, excuse me, July tenth, okay, July fifteenth.
July fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
He closed public comment.
Too many conversations.
Yeah, you closed public comment already, did you not?
I did close public comment, um, yeah, but I left the hearing open.
Evidentiary still.
The evidentiary hearing still opened.
But the public comment is, is done.
Yes. Okay, so, um, with, thank you for that, um, with that being said, is this your district? Would you like to make a motion to continue that?
Chairman, I would like to move to continue this case, twenty-three fourteen, until the second meeting in July, I believe July fifteenth.
Thank you. Thank you, on favor? Hi, any opposed? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Chairman, can we take?
Yep, we're going to take a five-minute break, thank you. All right, welcome back. Uh, next up this evening is new business, we have the presentation of our annual budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five by Rebecca Gay, our Entrum County Manager. And I don't have my mic on, so I'm going to get yelled at. Before Rebecca begins, I just want to say to the public, this is just the presentation, we have gotten calls, we are not voting on this tonight. This is so that it can soak with the public for at least thirty days before we actually take action on this.
Because, because we are required to give thirty days, yes.
Thirty days soak time, so. Ms. Rebecca?
All right, well, thank you, good evening. I, I want to start with thank yous first so that I do not forget, this would have been an impossible task without the budget team, so thank you to our Finance Director Sandra Hill, Assistant Finance Director Karen Kraus, HR Director Melissa Futral, and Public Informational Officer Randall Edwards. All right, um, I am pleased this evening to submit to you the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five proposed budget. This proposed budget is prepared in accordance with North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. All right, so this proposed budget includes services that the county must provide, such as the, the services that are shown here on your screen, as well as those services that the community values. These are examples of services that, that we provide because the community has requested and/or you all have placed value on these services. These community values are expressed through your policies, goals, and investments. Budget is a financially sound proposal addressing the important needs of this community. All right. So rising inflation rates have slowed, as you know, but we are continuing to see higher costs for materials and services. Sales tax revenues are also continuing to grow, but at a much slower rate than we have experienced post-COVID. And, excuse me, in November of twenty-twenty-three, Currituck County was again ranked as the least distressed county in the state of North Carolina, uh, receiving a tier-three designation for twenty-twenty-four under the North Carolina Department of Commerce's Development Tier Designations. Um, the designation is based on four factors, adjusted property tax base per capita, population growth, median household income, and unemployment over a twelve-month average. So these are the values for the county for, uh, twenty-twenty-four. As you can see, um, the county, the county has the state's third highest adjusted tax base per capita, the second highest population growth between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two, uh, the fourth highest median household income, and the twenty-first lowest unemployment rate between October of twenty-twenty-two and September of twenty-twenty-three. While the county is grateful for these economic successes, it is difficult to understand how a rural county in northeastern North Carolina is ranked in the company of counties such as Wake, Chatham, Union, and Durham in this designation. All right. Um, I also want to touch on the recent occupancy tax, uh, ruling from the North Carolina Court of Appeals, State Court of Appeals. Currituck County has historically utilized occupancy tax revenue to supplement the expense of providing public safety services in Corolla during the tourist season. Last year, as an example, you provided, or approved a transfer of three-point-three-nine million dollars in occupancy tax revenue to support public safety, um, in Corolla for emergency medical services and law enforcement. You also approved a one-point-four-million-dollar transfer to the Corolla Fire Service District to support fire protection services. In doing so, you, as the Tourism Development Authority, in your best judgment, approved this expenditure. The use of these funds for public safety, among other expenses, was challenged by a group of Corolla property owners in twenty-nineteen. The lawsuit claimed that the county spends occupancy tax revenue in violation of state statute. Initially, the trial court ruled in the county's favor, however, the Court of Appeals reversed the trial court decision in March of twenty-twenty-four. The Court of Appeals ruling prohibits the use of occupancy tax for public safety services. Therefore, this budget does not include a transfer of occupancy tax revenue to support law enforcement, emergency medical services, and fire protection in Corolla. So it remains a challenge to fund and provide services in the county with our unique geography and without other local governments to share in the provision of those services. Um, in consideration of these challenges, current economic conditions, and the recent North Carolina Court of Appeals, uh, ruling, we will continue to seek additional revenue sources, including grant funding opportunities, and we will also evaluate opportunities for efficiencies in service delivery. All right, so talk about the general fund, so the general fund is our largest fund, it's the principal operating fund for the county. Major operating activities include general government, administration, public safety, education, human services, and other governmental functions. Because of their importance and the cost to maintain personnel, vehicles and facility, and facilities, this budget proposes an allocation of thirty-seven percent of the general fund appropriation to departments associated with public safety. So these departments include the Sheriff's Office, Fire EMS, Emergency Management, Communications, Animal Services and Control, and the Detention Center. Also, in this recommended budget, it is proposed that twenty percent of the general fund appropriation is provided to education. So for general government, which, um, covers many of our administrative functions such as, um, legal or human resources, this proposed budget includes an appropriation of eleven-point-seven million dollars or approximately fourteen percent of the general fund appropriation. Part of this recommendation includes approximately one-point-three-million-dollar investment for information technology hardware and secure IT systems. We are, uh, coming upon our five-year computer replacement program for the county, so, um, a little over seven-hundred-thousand dollars is appropriated towards computer replacement in fiscal year twenty-five in the general fund. All right, so public safety, um, last year, you all committed to, uh, a vehicle replacement program and this proposed budget continues that commitment to invest significant funding into vehicle replacement programs for the Sheriff's Office and emergency medical services. This proposed budget allocates six-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty dollars to replace ten patrol vehicles and also allocates eight-hundred and two thousand, eight-hundred, excuse me, eight-hundred and two, I can't speak, just over eight-hundred-thousand dollars.
That's tough throwing those big numbers out.
That's right, just over eight-hundred-thousand dollars for the replacement of two ambulances, uh, in fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, there's also an allocation of just over one million dollars for fire apparatus replacement. We must off, also offer reliable communications for our public safety response. The county's cache of portable handheld and vehicle mobile radios is reaching end of life. Uh, this proposed budget includes an appropriation of six-hundred-thousand dollars for the replacement of a combination of one-hundred portable handheld radios and mobile vehicle radios. So fiscal year twenty-five is identified as the first year of a five-year commitment to replacing these radios. All right, uh, education, so, um, historically, the county has been very supportive of Currituck County schools. This year's recommended local current expense, uh, is fourteen-million-two-hundred-eighty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars. With this request, there's also one-million-five-hundred-thirty-five-thousand dollars allocated towards capital outlay. Um, again, historically, the county provides a one-point-four-million-dollar contribution to capital outlay, but the school system has requested, uh, an additional one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars this year for a one-time, uh, technology expense purchase. Last year, you all committed to funding improvements identified in the school system's five-year capital improvement plan at an annual expense of approximately three-point-six-million dollars. This proposed budget allocates two-point-nine-million dollars to support the five-year capital plan. The total recommended capital outlet, uh, allocation is four-million-four-hundred-thirty-five-thousand dollars. So with this, the expectation is that the school system will, um, apply approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars from state lottery funds and approximately three-hundred-thousand dollars from state public schools repair and renovation funds. All right. Tulsa Creek Elementary School, construction began on the new Tulsa Creek Elementary School in October twenty-twenty-four. Last year, you all adopted a four-cent property tax increase for construction of the new elementary school with the understanding that an additional four cents would be required in fiscal year twenty-five to pay the full debt payment, which equates to approximately eight cents of the property tax rate. You all have also committed over the years to higher education to ensure, um, access to quality education for those in higher learning. The county has partnered with the College of the Albemoral and this year, we continue that partnership with an allocation of two-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-forty-seven dollars to College of the Albemoral. Uh, we also look forward to building upon our relationship with Elizabeth City State University as the university expands its aviation science flight program to Currituck County Regional Airport. Personnel requests submitted by department heads for fiscal year twenty-five indicated the need for thoughtful consideration of how to address our current staffing realities of high turnover, vacancies, and salary shortfalls. Uh, this proposed budget includes a banded approach to a cost of living increase that provides for, uh, an eight-percent COLA for grades fifty through sixty-nine, a six-percent COLA for grades seventy through seventy-nine, and a four-percent COLA for grades eighty and above. Um, the eight-percent cost of living adjustment in grades fifty to sixty-nine provides the greatest increase in pay to those positions where we are currently experiencing the greatest turnover and the greatest number of vacancies. For example, there are currently multiple vacancies in social services and emergency medical services. Where the positions within these departments fall within grades fifty to sixty-nine for the, for the most part and this proposed increase will help make those salaries more competitive. While the cost of living adjustment is a positive step, the proposed COLA does not fully address salary disparities. Uh, so this proposed budget also includes the recommendation for a comprehensive salary study to be completed in fiscal year twenty-five. There are several new position requests in the, um, upcoming budget. The first is a Veterans Service Officer, which will, uh, join the administration team. This position will be shared with Camden County and will also be partially funded by Camden County. Looking to add an accounting clerk in finance, a part-time election specialist in elections, a immunis software specialist in the Information Technology Services Department, an additional planning technician, and an EMS logistics specialist in Fire EMS. I won't read these all to you, but we're also looking at several re-class. I won't read these all to you, but we're also looking at several reclassifications. The maintenance worker HVAC position in particular has been vacant for, I think, over a year. So we are looking to increase that salary in hopes that we'll be able to attract a candidate. Um, you'll also note the elimination of one position in the register of deeds office. This position will be filled uh for half the year until um Natalie Twitty moves into her new role as um register of deeds. Uh, this budget also includes the reclassification of two existing vacant positions, deputy positions in the sheriff's office. Um, they have requested that the positions be reclassified to a sergeant position and a lieutenant position. There's also a request to increase the sheriff's salary uh to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars as well as a, a increase for the social services director.
While you're on the sheriff's salary, just um could you just explain why we're, that is suggested?
Sure, uh it's due to compression. Um, currently, the chief deputy's salary is within five hundred dollars of the sheriff's salary. Um, the sheriff is also not eligible for longevity, whereas the chief deputy is. And that is what is causing this compression.
Well, are we addressing that longevity now, or were you gonna tackle that maybe with a salary study or something?
So the sheriff isn't eligible, elected officials are not eligible for longevity under the personnel policy. Which is why this has become an issue.
So Jeff Walker is within five hundred dollars of the one oh one three ten?
Yeah, with his longevity and everything, in August of twenty twenty-four, or August or September, I believe he would be above him.
Not certain of that, but I think due to um, uh, he is above step three. That position is above step three, so that uh combined with the longevity causes that compression.
I think the Dare County Sheriff makes one thirty-six, and he's got, what, six municipalities to do the work?
Okay, thank you.
Enterprise funds, um so enterprise funds account for operations that are financed and operated much like a private business. Uh, we have nine enterprise funds, and those are uh for water, sewer, and solid waste. We'll just touch uh quickly on some highlighted projects within our enterprise funds. Uh, we have a new reverse osmosis well at historic Corolla Park in connection to Southern Outer Banks Water Treatment System. This well is currently in design and construction would be anticipated for the fall of this year. Um, the Southern Outer Banks Water Treatment Expansion is a project that we actually started, uh, I believe, two years ago and are um almost complete. We're also under design for a sixteen-inch water main upgrade from the Curry-Tuck Water Tank to Sligo and uh two new pump stations and modifications to two existing pump stations. Um, the new reverse osmosis well number four for the mainland plant is uh almost complete in connection with the water treatment plant. So that project has also been started and is near completion. And uh as well as the Maple Water Treatment Plant Expansion. Um, these projects were also identified last year uh to acquire land for a new convenience center in Moayak Township and then design of expansion of the existing convenience site on Panther Landing. We have uh engaged a consultant for the Panther Landing site, but have not yet purchased a property or identified additional property for a second site in Moayak, which is why you'll see that again this year. So we're just gonna highlight two of our special revenue funds. The first is the Corolla Fire Service District. Um, last year, you increased the service district tack from, tax from five cents to six cents uh because the tax rate did not provide sufficient revenue to support um services. And then due to the Court of Appeals decision in the occupancy tax case, um, we are unable to transfer uh occupancy tax into Corolla Fire Service Districts this year. And ultimately, that causes us to increase the current tax rate uh from six cents to nine cents to be able to cover those services. Um, this proposed budget also includes a uh rate increase uh from six cents to nine cents for the Knott's Island Fire Service District. Alright, uh so this uh recommended budget or proposed budget also includes capital improvement plan. In a deliberate process, county departments were asked to identify capital needs uh from fiscal year twenty-five through fiscal year twenty-nine. Um, and the results of, of those deliberations are presented to you in the fiscal year twenty-five through fiscal year twenty-nine capital improvement plan. The first year of those uh capital purchases and projects are budgeted within the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Uh, the others are programmed or planned projects and will continue to be vetted as we move forward in future years. The fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget includes capital allocations in the following amounts. Uh, for the general fund, just over five point six million dollars. For special revenue funds, just over one point eight million dollars. And for the enterprise funds, approximately two point eight million dollars. So as presented above, last year, you committed to increasing the property tax rate by four cents to fully fund the debt payment for Tulsa Creek Elementary School. Excuse me. Um, so this year, that requires the, the additional four cents to be able to make that full debt payment. Additionally, this budget proposes an additional two-cent increase for a total tax rate increase of six cents, uh which brings our proposed rate to sixty-two cents per one hundred dollar property valuation. Um, this increase is necessary to compensate for the elimination of the use of occupancy tax revenue uh to supplement public safety services in Corolla. So our overall proposed budget for the general fund for fiscal year twenty-five is eighty-one million, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars. Um, I believe this operating budget is responsible for addressing community needs and expectations. I will offer um that, that um we should consider alternative sources of revenue in, in future years. Um, I encourage you to consider placing a referendum on the November ballot for the additional one-quarters percent sales tax um under Article forty-six of local option sales tax. Um, the revenue is not restricted or earmarked and can therefore be used for any use uh allowed to counties.
And do you remember, off the topic, we talked about this briefly, what that actually equates to? What, what that would generate for us?
Approximately two million dollars. Alright, uh so this evening, you've had the budget presentation. You'll have a budget work discussion scheduled for June third prior to your next regular meeting. A public hearing is scheduled for the second meeting in June, on June seventeenth, uh with possible adoption. Um, and then the effective date of the adopted budget will be July first. In closing, I, I also want to thank department heads for their uh diligent work and submission of this budget. And I commend the, the budget to you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Rebecca, if I can ask, when could, when could we get like a zip or zip drive of that before? I know, like in the past.
Sure, so yes, I should have, uh, we have a hard copy for you this evening, and we can also provide you with an electronic copy.
Okay, and the public can view this?
Yes, the um, it will be posted on the website. And also, there will be a hard copy available for citizens and for the press in the office of the clerk to the board.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anything else from Mr. Rebecca this evening?
The hard drive. The hard drive, we get a uh red magic marker too, right?
That's what the red books, we got the book. Alright. Rebecca, thank you very much. Alright, next up is uh some, some new old business. Uh, we have several ordinances that are up for approval or denial. Um, we've already heard these, but um they had to come through again because they were not voted on or not unanimously uh approved, so um, unless we get to go through these again with you?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is uh, is um, is to provide a penalty for uh golf carts, which we've heard about uh tonight in public comment, and um I'll let you expound a little further.
Yes, so all three of these pursuant to Senate Bill three hundred. Um, and also really case law, um, we don't want to run into an issue where there's any kind of illegal unlawful stop by law enforcement because a lot of these ordinances are enforced by law enforcement. And if you just have a civil penalty, you may run into issues with that, with, with whether that's a lawful stop or not. Um, and my opinion is that it, it could be considered that. Um, also pursuant to Senate Bill three hundred, if you do have a criminal penalty within the ordinance, it has to be um within that section of the ordinance. So the first one before you is golf carts. Um, the, the only thing that has changed again is adding that criminal penalty. Um, there was some discussion during the break that we just had.
Yes.
Um, and so if you look at the language, it constitutes a misdemeanor or infraction. Um, and so there's pursuant to statute, there's certain provisions that only can be an infraction and not a misdemeanor. And I believe this is one of them. So it's just pursuant to that general statute fourteen dash four. So tonight, this can be adopted just with a majority vote, since this is the second reading.
Okay, Miss Kitty, you weren't here. Any comments, questions, or concerns as you weren't here for the discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does this have any impact on sidewalks?
Whether if they're operating on a sidewalk.
Like if they're operating on a sidewalk or a PVA where he's saying like, you can operate. Now, if they are operating on a state road under thirty-five, meet, meet the requirements and all that stuff, a sidewalk, you could do something or charge them if they were driving recklessly in a parking lot at Food Lion, which would be considered a PVA or something like that, but like far as the sidewalks.
Like, like the Greenway in Corolla, for instance. If you have people buzzing along in a golf cart on that.
Well, there's one section that the county has is the Corolla Light section.
Right.
Corolla Light still owns that.
Yeah, it's theirs. So they, they control that.
It's private property, yeah.
So would not impact on that.
No.
No.
Would not, no.
How's that? Did Ben call you? He called me, I was in the mountains in a holler, so. Okay, alright. But that, that does raise an interesting question, if it's uh like on our Greenway, for instance. If, if we can.
The only thing you could enforce on that would be like a PVA or something like, that would be considered like a PVA unless it was private property, like for the Corolla Light part.
Yeah, that, that's up to them.
That's up to them.
They'd have to call it down.
Now, if somebody was driving, you know, reckless on it, then that's something that, yeah, there could be enforcement.
Their staff crews is up and down, that's why Ben was concerned all, you've seen.
But that would be decision of the deputies.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about like the Greenway in Corolla where people are, don't routinely see golf carts on them. Okay, most people are out on twelve because the speed limit's thirty-five or in the neighborhoods. But it would, it just, it begs the question for future, whatever. If the need arises, I guess, the sheriff's department can always bring it up as a, we could deal with it at the time.
I mean, we get a lot of complaints on golf courts, and probably ninety-five percent of the complaints regarding golf carts are in Corolla.
Are in Corolla.
Yeah, and I would say when looking at the ordinance itself, um, it makes clear that you, it's unlawful for any person to operate a golf cart on or any public road in the county except as provided in this article. And then they go on to say that you can operate on public streets with, as long as it's less than thirty-five miles per hour. So I would say you can do that, and it doesn't mention sidewalks. So it's unlawful to operate on those sidewalks, and I think you can enforce that just through this ordinance. That makes sense.
If they were driving recklessly.
If they were driving recklessly, yeah, I mean, like you said, it's.
And if it's county property and you're not, if it's not one of these public roads, and then I think that would be unlawful.
Something you could articulate of.
Yes.
Subject was. Alright, okay. On two wheels.
But if it's private property, no.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, any further discussion? Have a motion for approval? Do not. I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next up, uh, ordinance amend and provide for civil and criminal penalties for parking. It's basically the.
Yep, so again, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, this, again, this is uh the, an ordinance that we already have in place for parking, and it's adding a criminal penalty provision to that.
Again, it's Corolla, that's a big problem.
Yes.
For this, so, alright, any further discussion on this one? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moving to chairman.
Thank you, wait a second.
That was a tie.
It's a tie.
Paper, rock, scissors.
He gave it to Owen, alright, alright, age four beauty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next up, an ordinance to provide for criminal penalty use for the use permit, user permit for the uh full-drive beach.
Yeah, so this is the final ordinance before you tonight, that is the second reading. Um, it's adding the criminal penalty provision to the user permit parking system. So if they don't have the permits like they're supposed to, then this can be enforced with a criminal penalty. And this one really um can create that unlawful stop issue.
Right.
As well as you could not have the authority, you could say, hey, look, you don't have a permit. You have to have a permit to be here, and you could ticket them, put it on their windshield, leave, but you couldn't make them leave, and they knew it.
Right.
Alright.
And now this means you can make them leave? Okay.
Yeah, Senate Bill three hundred took the.
Okay.
The ability to make you.
Mike moved to approve, I'll second that since Corolla and um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, next up, resolution authorizing the expenditure.
Before we go any further, quick, down and dirty, what was Senate Bill three hundred?
Oh, that's a loaded question. Senate Bill three hundred was huge, I mean.
That's not a down and dirty.
I can, it's a very thick document.
I know, it's thick.
But as far as this is concerned, Senate Bill three hundred um basically took a lot of the, it kind of decriminalized a lot of the ordinances that counties were implementing. Um, it specifically listed things that you couldn't have a criminal penalty for, and then things that you could, you had to have that penalty within the section of the ordinance amongst a lot of other things.
It took a lot of power away from your local government.
It did, it did, yes.
Exactly.
That's a very good.
Probably, not here, but probably in other municipalities, it caused a lot of lawsuits as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, next, yes, sir, next up is opioid settlement funds, resolution for that.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, so back in, I don't know, a few months ago, the opioid task force uh came before you and made a presentation as far as what they would recommend with to, how to use the opioid, opioid settlement funds. Um, and we have certain reporting requirements that we have to do, and part of that and, and different steps that have to be taken. So part of that is the board adopting a resolution that approves the recommendations that were presented by the opioid task force. So before you is a, that resolution, and if you recall, they recommended, let's see. They recommended option A, so we have that memorandum of, memorandum of understanding that has different options that can be implemented. They recommended option A, and with that option, they recommended the collaborative strategic planning by contracting for a full-time program coordinator, recovery support services through a peer support specialist, and scholarships for rehabilitation inpatient and or outpatient care, post-overdose response teams, early intervention programs, and possible naloxone distribution. Also, a major part of that was to create an opioid advisory board um through the adoption of an ordinance, which I will bring forth um at the next meeting if you adopt this. which I will bring forth at the next meeting if you adopt this resolution. That will encourage community participation and feedback and also implement those strategies that they recommend, the ones that I just mentioned.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to say, um, thank you to, to both of you, Rebecca and Megan, for getting this on the agenda. They presented in January, we presented in January. So I have had lots of calls and lots of people contacting me wanting us to hurry up, hurry up. But I tell them nothing good moves fast. So I thank you for getting this on here and look forward to getting the advisory board in place soon. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and early, do an early nomination. Vice Chair Jarvis, she did an excellent job with this. Had a lot of, uh, good people with a lot of knowledge, deep knowledge participate. The first couple of meetings were a little chaotic, but then after that, it kind of like just fell in a row. She did a good job. And like I said, she, you look like the, uh, the, the, the ex officio for that, that advisory board. It's, your name's all over it.
All right. All right. Well, can I have a motion for approval?
I move for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Next up, consideration of additional compensation for the elections director.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we received a request from the Board of Elections for compensation for additional hours worked by, uh, the elections director during the 2024 primary. The Board of Elections deemed 72 hours of work as additional, uh, work outside of the regulations adopted by the State Board of Elections and is requesting compensation for those hours in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 163 dash 35C.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've done a little research and the statute that they're quoting is saying that a director, excuse me, is paid a minimum of $12 an hour. And it also states overtime. Uh, the reason they put $12 an hour in there when years ago, a lot of the offices were part-time and some of the directors were making minimum wage. So that's why they put the $12 in there per hour.
Okay.
After I left, which I used to be the Director of Elections, they did make it a salary position.
Right.
And so being a salary position, they're, they're exempt from overtime. And I have checked with other counties and there are some counties that pay overtime, but the majority of them do not. Uh, I think if we go this route to say that 72 hours of overtime outside of their duties, this time of the year, when there's an election, you're going to have overtime. And the county has always allowed the overtime to be used as comp time. If you, if you work in, you know, so many hours over. I just feel like if we do this, we're opening a can of worms. If you're the Director of Elections and you're having an election, you know you're going to be working overtime.
Right.
Next year, when there's no elections.
Yeah.
You're going to be twiddling your thumbs sometime. Not saying they don't do anything, but there's, they purge the records and there's always voter registration. But I, I definitely feel like we're opening a can of worms if we approve this.
Okay.
I, I also questioned how many, was it 72 hours of work? Was it over a couple of weeks, a month? We don't have a lot of information here to know how they arrived at 72 hours. I agree with Kitty. Uh, does this mean other salary employees in the county, uh, competition for overtime? I mean, I think it is opening a can of worms. I agree with Kitty.
Do you have something, Paul?
Yeah. The only thing I was going to say is like Commissioner Etheridge stated, you know, this is every other year gets busier and, and I get that, but, but I, I agree. I mean, in the off years.
Life's pretty good.
Yeah, life's good. So I, I, I agree.
So I'm, I'm thinking that, um, there's probably going to be a no vote on that.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, so I, in my review of this statute, I agree with Commissioner Etheridge. I think that, um, the statute makes clear that she gets paid for whatever work she's expected to do, which would be work extra hours probably during election time. Um, I did email Paul Cox. He is the General Counsel for the State Board of Elections and he disagreed with me. And his opinion was that the statute did allow for overtime in excess of 40 hours per week of work as long as the Board of Elections has approved that.
Is, was that strictly for salaried or hourly employees, did he say?
Does, does he want to pay it?
By definition.
Believe it speaks just to the director.
Salary is salary.
Director, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So it's just.
So I mean, I, I disagree with him, but I wanted you to all know that that is what the State Board of Elections General Counsel.
If we want to recognize someone, that's fine, right? But the reality is this, this salaried managerial position is no different than any other managerial position. I mean.
Both of you work more than 40 hours a week every.
Maggie works long hours.
Exactly.
Both of y'all work more than 40 hours every week.
Right, right. So Rebecca has a stop.
Never goes.
Right.
She has a bed in her office.
All right. So that being said, uh, this is, uh, I guess up to us to decide whether we want to do this or not. And.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to deny.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, uh, consideration for commissioner travel for Commissioner Owen Etheridge to attend the county advocacy days, June 11th and 12th in 2024 in Raleigh. Do we need any discussion on that?
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda. Any comments, questions, concerns on the consent agenda? All right. May I have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This time I'll reach us the regular meeting and open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority for presentation of the annual budget for tourism.
So the Tourism Development Authority budget, proposed budget for fiscal year 25 is also prepared in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government and Budget Fiscal Control Act. Occupancy tax revenue, we, uh, collect 6%. Funds received from the assessment of occupancy tax on the rental of lodging units within the county is taxed at a rate of 6%. Our local bill, uh, allows for two thirds of those collections to be expended on tourism-related expenditures and one third to, uh, towards the promotion of travel and tourism. So occupancy tax collection has steadily increased since 2019. However, the fiscal year 2024 colle, and the fiscal year 2024 collections are approximately 3% higher for the same period of time over last year. However, there is an indication that rental unit numbers are returning to their pre-COVID number.
Oh, big time.
Now, the, the three per, the 3.2% higher that you're referring to, it covers which period?
It's, uh, so I believe the most recent period that I looked at was, um, January to March of this current year compared to, to last year.
And they're saying it's up 3.2%?
Same timeframe.
Yes, I, I pulled that directly from our, the monthly financial report.
That is not.
There's no, that's going to be interesting. Okay.
Okay.
I guess the math is the math, but, uh.
God, yes.
Oh, it's way, way, way off.
Way down.
Way down.
I've heard as much as potentially anywhere from 10 to 30%.
But you actually saw that you compared the numbers that you actually received.
Yeah, this is actually what, well, the.
Oh, this is collections. Okay, yeah. So what's up?
Collection years are typically off, but.
Oh, okay.
The problem is it, it looks.
It lags.
It lags. Yeah. We're, we're behind. And it looks, the, and then the number of people coming down and renting the houses is also also.
The next quarter should show something then.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see it. Anyway.
The most important takeaway here is that the, the revenue is, is slowing and that we are not seeing that nice steady increase that we have seen, um, since COVID. Um, so the proposed budget allocates $4,718,360 for tourism promotion expenditures. Uh, these expenditures, uh, include advertising or marketing, uh, the publication, distribution of pamphlets and other materials, and then any market research. Um, go ahead.
The, isn't there always a, what was that, a surplus or we, we never could spend all the money for advertisements? So is there a fund balance sitting in there always? Or do we always spend that? Now there is, isn't there? A big.
Big. Well, we also have the rainy day fund. I mean, we, we recognize that we could have a year, uh, we'll have a Katrina level event or something. We have money set aside.
Correct. But I mean, but there's always an abundance of, of extra.
Yeah.
Oh, we're not going to.
Promotional dollars that we, okay, well, okay.
We don't need the state fund.
Okay, never mind then. The state's not listening, are they? Okay. All right.
So this appropriation includes, uh, transfers to the operating fund in the amount of $105,000 for airport promotion, I believe is $40,000, and, um, the $65,000 for the administration of collections. Uh, the recommended budget on the tourism-related side, um, is approximately, or excuse me, is $4,367,253. Uh, just over 2.4 million of that is general tourism-related expenditures. Um, 1.4 million is allocated to historic Corolla Park operations. So this includes the Whalehead, the Maritime Museum, and the Wildlife Education Center operations. And then there's an additional $438,355 allocated for capital. There is a transfer of $2,707,000, $2,707,252. And, um, those are primarily for projects that we'll touch on just a moment. In terms of the capital, um, within this expenditure, there is, uh, $320,000 allocated for computer replacement. Uh, within this fund, there's $90,000 allocated for audio visual, uh, upgrades at the Wildlife Education Center. $50,000 for vehicle replacement, $180,000 for the Currytuck Jack statue, and $14,000 for, uh, improvements at the Mayock Welcome Center.
Is there any money for the old jail?
That's what I was going to ask.
The historical jail?
There, there is not.
We got like six million we just can't spend right now, so, uh.
Certainly something you all can bring forward in your deliberation.
Uh, yeah. Okay.
I thought that was one of the projects, to get the jail restored.
Uh, so we've completed the first phase of that. That was the stabilization. And I, um, I know that our tourism director, uh, worked with some members of the community, was facilitated by Cameron Lowe. And, um, I will, I will have to check in with, with our tourism director on, on the status of that project. So projects that are, are funds that will be, uh, transferred to some of our capital construction, um, funds include, funds for the Herring Tuna and Shack walkovers. This is the, I believe, the fourth year of the walkover replacement project. And we are transferring just $1.2 million for the replacement of those walkovers. An additional $60,000 for the design of improvements to the Southern Beach Access and the Albicore Access. These will be the final two projects included in that walkover replacement, uh, program. There's $225,000 designated for bulkhead replacement at Corova Beach Park. You may remember back in 2019, we replaced, um, half of the bulkhead that was damaged during Hurricane Irene. Not Irene, Hurricane Florence. Um, and so we now require additional pairs to, repairs to the remaining half. Um, there is $500,000 designated for whalehead dredging. And this ultimately will be used for any design that is completed in the upcoming year, uh, for the whalehead dredging project. And then a transfer of $96,000 for the, um, calendar year, uh, shoreline stability study. Again, you have received the presentation this evening and will, uh, have a budget work session on June 3rd with poss, with a public hearing and possible adoption at your June 19th regular meeting. The proposed budget will be posted on the website and a hard copy will be available in the office of the clerk to the board, the Historic Courthouse. Um, any comments on the proposed budget may also be emailed, um, by citizens to commissioners@curritickcountync.gov.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, the Tourism Development Authority? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, we'll open a special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District with a presentation of that budget as well.
Be our final budget presentation of the evening. This is the fiscal year 25 proposed budget for the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. Um, this budget was also prepared in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government and Budget Fiscal Control Act. A Water and Sewer District is an entity that serves a small geographical area in the county and provides a greater level of service than other areas. Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District is expected to pay for its operational and capital needs through financial resources from Avalorum taxes, uh, within the districts and rates charged for utility services. Uh, the current base rate for wastewater collection and treatment is well below the rate required to sustain wastewater collection and treatment. This proposed budget recommends an increase of the base rate for wastewater from $13 to $20. Uh, you may remember last year, you all increased the rate from $795 to $13. So this is a continuation of that increase. It is estimated that the base rate will need to be increased over a period of fiscal years so that the revenue matches the expenses.
Didn't we, we had a, we saw this in a study a few years back that they showed us that we were going to be expecting.
Yes.
Larger increases.
And in Macon, Macon as well.
Yeah, it was about four, five years ago, I think. Yeah.
What should the base rate for sewer be?
Uh, but for comparison, the base rate for mainland sewers, $40.
I mean, what should the base rate for Ocean Sands District be?
Uh, I am not certain. I believe we were attempting to get up to $40 initially. I'd, I'd have to look back at the rate study.
Because the, I mean, the way, I'm sorry.
Go.
Because the way I'm reading into this, um, we're subsidizing the sewer rate in Ocean Sands to the tune of $20 base rate.
Uh, no, we're not transferring funds from the general fund into Ocean Sands. Uh, they're.
How, if we're not paying enough in to cover the expenses, how will they?
It's not 40. How, who's paying the other 20?
Well, they're, I mean, I, they're appropriating fund balance.
How did they acquire fund balance? Might predate you.
Yeah, because I thought, I thought you said we had to get it up to $40.
Right. Uh, if the math's not there, I don't, so Sandra, help us out.
Help us out.
If I could make a comment.
Absolutely.
Ocean Sands is the only utility district that we have that has a tax rate. And we, the tax rate is designed to pay the debt and the user rate is designed to pay the operations.
Okay.
But that has not always been a consistent thing throughout the 30, 40 years that, that it's been going on. So we realized last year that the, um, tax rate was not covering the debt and that's why you increased that rate a little bit last year.
But it's still not covering the operations, and a lot of that is because since 2018, the cost of chemicals has gone through the roof. And so, the, just the operating cost of all of these utility systems in the last four to five years has increased significantly.
So it's $20 that we need to be to cover that?
No, not even close.
Maybe a 40.
Okay, well, then.
It needs to be 40.
Even with the tax in case we do, we still need to bump it to 40.
Basically, the thought is to slowly bring it up, rather than hitting them hard.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
A lot of people got to hit hard this time this year.
But we're going to get, yeah, it seems like we're just going deeper in the hole, ultimately, right? I mean, we're spending down whatever fund balance they had to offset, is that basically what I'm hearing?
They, like I say, all the, all the operating costs have gone up significantly.
Right.
And we had anticipated, once we got the new sewer, that that might slow down some, but it has not.
It has not, okay.
And it's had its own issues, so I think.
So $20 is not going to work.
No.
With the, with the rising cost of everything, I think you're still going to need to go up to the $40, and there was a time when we made the tax rate zero. Once the initial debt was paid off.
Sure.
The, the tax rate went to zero, and there was no tax rate for several years, but then when the new sewer went in, the tax rate was reinstated.
Right.
And the council was, by not collecting, I mean, we're being very gentle, and have been, that by holding off and doing this, we in fact jeopardize the future, because this is necessary for the maintenance and the upkeep and all the other stuff.
Operations, it's going to be a 40.
You know, I'm sorry, that, that money's coming from somewhere, the shortfall's coming from somewhere.
User has to pay.
It's within the fund.
Right now, we're in the middle of the developmental fee study.
Okay.
As soon as we get that back, we will roll into the next year, probably, what, 2026, you're going to have a rate study that will go through all the enterprise funding.
We don't even need that, we know, we know we're short, right?
It needs to be. Mainland's already at 40, I don't know why we're artificially holding down, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
We have a recommendation.
Yeah, we're going to have to, yeah, okay.
All right, so expenditures within the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District this year, administration at a cost of $359,574. You can see the expense for water treatment and operations. There's $45,000 recommended for capital outlay in water, and $370,000 recommended for capital outlay in sewer, and then the debt service payment for the plant. So the total fund request this year is $2.9 million. Again, you have received this presentation this evening, and there will be a budget work session held on June 3rd. It will be a public hearing and possible adoption at your second meeting in June, and effective date of the adopted budget will be July 1st. The budget will be posted on the website and available in the office of the Clerk to the Board, and comments can be emailed to commissioner@currituckcountync.gov.
All right.
Bob Whitehead.
Right, right, all right, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
All right, any, any further discussion on this? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Paul, Paul gets a second, how's that? Selena gets a, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I will reconvene the regular meeting, and at this time, I will move pursuant to NC, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1185, to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase or exchange owned by Wind Chaser LLC, known as Track One Wind Chaser LLC, exempt subdivision, pin number 002300006880000, to be used for any public purpose, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1183, to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled Currituck County v. Currituck County Board of Adjustment, and Edward Delaney and Tara Murphy. Can I have a second, please?
Aye.
Selena, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.